All right, we'll open the meeting please, 6:30. Town of Lee Right to Know Law Meeting Checklist. The Chairman of the Select Board due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis in accordance with Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this Board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are: Providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. For utilizing Zoom platform for this electronic meeting, our members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the Zoom platform, and the public has access contemporaneously, listen, and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phones: 1-646-558-8656, and entering meeting ID 85129916736, password 124855, by entering the same information through zoom.us. B, providing public notice of the necessary information for assessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using Zoom, and instructions are provided on the Town of Lee's website at leenewhampshire.org. C, providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public party during the meeting. If there are problems with access, if anybody has a problem, please call 603-659-5414. D, adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we'll adjourning the meeting and have it rescheduled to another time. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call. Attendance when each member states their presence. Also, please state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the Right to Know law. I'm passing the gavel this time to the Chairman of the ABC.
Okay, we will start with a roll call. State if anyone else is in the room with you, if you're alone, and your name. Julie Glover.
Present, and I'm alone.
Tom Murdock, present and alone. Jeff Laporte.
Present and alone for now.
Scott Bugbee.
I'm here, I'm alone.
Pat Barber.
Here, I'm alone.
John Lacorice.
Here, and I'm alone.
Stacy Waits.
That's right, I'm here and I'm alone.
Larry Kinberg.
I'm here, but I got my dog with me.
Karen Fossey.
I'm here and I'm alone.
I'm here and I am not alone.
Rebecca, you're not alone. Who else is in the room?
My husband and my four and five dogs.
Okay, Rebecca Hawthorne.
I'm here. Joe St. George is meandering about, and my grandmother, Elizabeth Warhan, is also about.
Not Scott Bugbee, but Cord Blomquist.
I'm here and I'm by myself.
Carrie Brown.
Can you change that?
Yes, I'm here and I'm alone.
We can start off with, let's see, Cemetery Trustees, Jeff Laporte.
Okay. So as you can all see from the screen, we have a 0% increase for the next coming year.
I'm on the meeting, baby.
You may wonder why the numbers have all been moved around. We're trying to, as a committee, figure out where the money fits the best according to our needs in each item. So we'll start with the top, I guess. $1,500 decrease in the superintendent's salary is because we do not have a superintendent. So there's no need for that. Trustees have agreed that we will not be taking our trustees' salaries, so the 300 decrease in that line is due to that.
Yes.
Maintenance and repair. This item has gone up substantially due to, we've had issues at the Lee Hill Cemetery in Old Parish with the grub infestation that had to be treated, and we've also had some issues with tree and scrub pruning and stuff we had to have done, as well as we do our stone washing out of that account. We've brought in companies to wash the stones and hopefully preserve them and make them last longer. The flag account stayed the same. Office supplies. Donna has been using her own office supplies up to this point, and now that we're gonna hopefully have our own office space, Donna, we decided that the committee should be buying the office supplies instead of them being supplied by Donna. Let's see, what's next? Fuel costs. We've decreased that, and part of that is because the Highway Department also assists us in maintaining cemeteries, and we've split the fuel costs for the mowing and stuff like that with the Highway Department, and we thought that was more of an inline number with what we use. That went up a little bit. It's for buying mowers and weed whackers and hole diggers that we need. The Highway Department, we've been using a lot of their equipment, and we're trying to buy some of the equipment out of our budget that specifically gets used in the cemetery. Memorial repairs has been a big line item for us. We've had a lot of damaged stones that need to be repaired in a number of the cemeteries, and that line item is also in case of any vandalism or storm damage that might occur. So I'm sure that I might have left something out, but if you guys have any questions regarding any of this, let me know.
Any questions?
Jeff, can you speak to cemetery improvements? I think you skipped over that one, maybe I missed it, but...
I think we left that one, we, yeah, we left that one as it was. That's for improving like the fences, fences around the cemeteries, improving the sheds, anything that we needed to do with that.
For the last few years, you haven't requested any money from the trust fund for the cemeteries. You've kind of tried to build it up a little bit. Are you guys continuing that practice for this upcoming year?
No, we actually discussed that at our last meeting, and we're gonna start talking about taking some of the money from the various trusts and putting them towards the costs that go with maintaining those cemeteries.
Okay.
So we will be looking at offsetting some of these costs with the trust money.
Are you gonna do it this fiscal year, Jeff, or next?
I'm not sure 100%. I talked to Peter about it and Donna.
Okay.
I believe we also had to talk to the trust, the...
Trustees of the trust funds.
Right. And we have to figure it out with them, but we are discussing it, and it will be, if not this current year, it will be in the next one.
Okay, thank you for that.
No problem. Any other questions?
I have a question. So given the actual expenses for 2020, do you think that 2,100 is enough for fiscal year '22?
Wondering that too.
2,100...
Seems like we've spent $5,300 so far this year on maintenance. Do we feel like 2,100 is gonna be sufficient, or should that number be higher for maintenance?
I think the stuff we did this past year, I think, is hopefully gonna take care of most of the big issues. I think a lot of it was the grub control, and we did split some of that with the Highway Department. We bought the fertilizer and grub control stuff in bulk, because a lot of it was also used at Little River Park or wherever else the Highway Department needed to use it. So Pete, we were pretty comfortable with that number.
Any other questions? You're good? All right.
I'm fine.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Take care.
Next up, Recreation Commission, Larry.
Okay, well, we didn't have a chance to spend too much of our money this year, and we're not really sure what we're gonna be doing next year. So what we decided to do was just massage the budget a little bit. We actually cut our budget by about $1,300, and the reason is, is because of a couple of items. The Model Rocket Day, we put in nothing for that because we have plenty of supplies left over, so we shouldn't have any issue there. As far as the other programs go, we can only hope that we can run them next year, so we kept the basic numbers in there. The Town Fair is just a placeholder, that's not really part of the Rec. Commission. The Electric at 1,500, the Easter Egg Hunt, and the Fishing Derby, we kept the same. The Music in the Park, we kept the same at $3,500 for that. Halloween Bash for next year, $300, and we still want to institute the archery program next year, so we left that $1,000 in the budget. We had in the budget last year for the pickleball court, but that was, we did actually get that one done this year, so that was just a one-time item. So that's basically our budget. We're recommending, we saw the obscene request from ORYA, so we're leaving that at $10,000, and we hope that you will keep it that way. I will just say one thing about that. We feel that it's extremely discriminatory against other kids who participate in sports that are not offered by ORYA and are not getting subsidized by the Town of Lee. So I hope you'll take that into consideration. We presented to the Select Board a proposal for the use of the parks by both ORYA and Maximum Velocity, both nonprofits. I don't know if we'll revisit that next year, it's up to the Select Board, but we highly recommend the $10,000 to ORYA this year, and we will probably recommend dropping that next year. I do think that, and I will reiterate, that for some time I felt that this has been a discriminatory amount of money because it only affects a certain number of kids. It doesn't affect all the kids. Case in point, my granddaughter is part of the swim team, and that costs $650 for six months, and that doesn't get subsidized, and she's a resident of Lee. So I think if you're gonna be giving out money to subsidize, and don't forget that once money is given to a nonprofit, it doesn't have to be used to subsidize anything. Once it's given, it's gone. You can't direct it. So again, I hope you'll look at that carefully, and you'll do what's right. That's all I've got to say about that.
Can I just interrupt for a second? That was Larry speaking. Larry, that's not what the Rec. Commission discussed. That's Larry, that's your personal opinion, correct?
Probably that was my personal, but we have discussed this over time.
Right, but our recently, when we recently had a budget meeting two weeks ago, we discussed that we were just gonna let, keep the $10,000 in there and let the Select Board do what they were gonna do, and weren't gonna waste our time, because they always do what they do.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to bring up one issue that just actually came up yesterday, the day before. I understand that the porta potty was removed. That's not the issue. The issue I have was when I got to the park, I believe it was the day before yesterday, Steve was there, Parks and Recreation Director was there, and I said, you know, what's going on? He said, "I'm waiting for the chief, fire chief, to come down and bring me a wastebag. There's a bag of human excrement laying in the parking lot." And so Chief came and cleaned it out, and said, "Well, where's the porta potty?" He said, "Well, the porta potty's been removed." Okay, porta potty's been removed, somebody had to use something and decided to just put it on a bag and leave it in the parking lot. Then yesterday, I pulled into the park to just see what was going on. There was a lot of kids in the parking lot, and there was a guy who parked his truck over in the corner and who was obviously relieving himself in the corner of the park. So I'm wondering, I'm wondering if we don't need to think hard about putting that porta potty back in, or what else we could possibly do other than that.
I already talked to Steve about this and said, "Yeah, go ahead and put the porta potty back in." So it was up to him to get ahold of the company and get it back.
Okay, that's great. I didn't know that.
I think there is one there, but it's up by the baseball field.
Well, that might be. I looked to where it was traditionally, if you would, or parking lots.
Yeah, no, we took that away at the start of, or near to the start of COVID.
Okay, great.
Is that the reason for taking it away, or what was the reason for taking it away? Just COVID and...
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Larry, can you speak to the tennis court? You're requesting $10,000, but what is the status of the plans for that in terms of location, cost? Do you have any information you can share with us?
Well, the only thing that we have for cost is an estimate that we got several years ago, which was gonna be between $30,000 and $35,000 to renovate the tennis court. The court that we currently have is undersized, it's not regulation size. I noticed that the net was put back up, and I thought that the selectmen had closed the court for safety reasons, so I don't know who put the net up or why it's up. We do have use on it, but the court is not in good shape and probably should be closed down. We should renovate that, and that's been on the agenda for, actually on the back burner for a number of years. We just don't have the money to do it.
So Julie, I don't know if you remember, didn't we say we were gonna take that out? I thought we...
We did. We were gonna take it out.
So we didn't take it out, I assume, since the net was put back up?
I honestly would have to get to Steve and see what happened.
Okay, and I guess it's up to the other two selectmen as well, but I would request that you have a conversation with Steve and find out what the status is, because as far as I remember, we were supposed to take it out. So I don't think it changed, but that should be taken offline, so...
Is Mast Way use that?
I don't think so. No.
Like, who put the net up? Are we...
Good question. I would assume the Highway Department put it up.
That's what I'm wondering, like...
That seems odd.
Does Mast Way have some, do they have the net? I mean, what's...
Not that I'm aware.
Try and figure that out, because, and if they're using it, then talk to them about...
Well, can the other two selectmen chime in on this? Is it your intention as well to have Steve remove it and take it offline? What is your thoughts?
Well, personally, I don't remember having a conversation saying, "Let's take it out." I mean, it might have been quite some time ago, but I don't, I know that several times we discussed the tennis court and what we should do about it, and I honestly thought that at one time we got an estimate to repair it or to bring it back up to a usable court. So if, it's also, at one time was used as a skating rink, is it not, in the wintertime?
No, not the court itself.
No, we had tried to put up the skating rink, oh, probably about five years ago, six years ago.
Yeah.
And that didn't work out too well.
Okay.
But it was not on the tennis court.
Anyway, you know, the court's just been sitting there. I've never seen it really used over many years here, but I think the court, the last time I saw it, is either gonna need a lot of work to fix it, or just go ahead and take it out, because I don't see it being utilized that much.
Let me chime in at this point. Scott is right. A while back, we had discussed about having it dismantled and taken down, because we wanted to put all the recreational activities in Little River Park. So the thought was, why carry this one? It's away from Little River Park at this point, and also, it is terror, it needs a lot of work. So I think Scott and I, and Carrie, we did discuss this, Carrie, and it should be taken down.
So are you okay with having the Town Minister checklist?
Court in, that's where the discussion went.
That's correct.
About the tennis court, everybody said, "Okay, let's do a pickleball court," and that's what ended up at Little River Park, right? That was part of all that same discussion.
That was part of the discussion, that's correct.
Yeah.
Steve has indicated that they do not put the net up. They don't know who's doing it. It goes up, and it goes down.
It must have been Mast Way. That's why I asked about Mast Way. They must be using it, and they must have the net.
But isn't Mast Way closed now?
Closed now.
They go part of the day.
Part of the day, but I've never known Mast Way to utilize a tennis court.
Yeah.
You could be a rogue actor like these people building trails.
I'm trying to say go for activities.
Then take it out of there. I mean, we were supposed to take it offline anyway, and there was no decision made as to where it was gonna go if we were gonna resurrect it, and we did expand what we initially put in for a pickleball court, which has become quite popular.
Yeah. Some people do utilize the tennis court, but it is in such a disarray that most people go to like Fog, you know, Fog Lane tennis courts in Durham, but there are a few people in the community that very rarely use that tennis court. I don't think it will be hugely most.
So could we ask the Rec. Commission to take on the responsibility of finding how much a court would cost to place at Little River Park, so we know what that number is?
Yeah, we could do that. We'd have to find a location over there.
Okay. Maybe, is that something the Rec. Commission can take a look at and then get back to us in terms of placement and also cost of putting one in?
We can certainly do that.
A regulation one, I guess?
Yeah.
Hey, Tom, can I ask a general question? If funds for the current year are not used, what happens to the money? Does it roll over? Does it go back to some general account? This is just mostly for my education, I guess, because he acknowledged that, you know, they weren't able to do a lot of their planned activities for 2020.
Right, so they get those budgeted, you know, dollars, and it stays in their budget. So they, so that is a question that I was gonna ask. What do you have in your account now, and do you, since you didn't use a lot of the money that you had from last year?
Well, we still have...
Do you need the whole amount of money in a year that we're kind of trying to get through?
Maybe you can, Julie, can you put up what the reserve funds are for each of the commissions, please? There you go.
Yeah, so we've got, what, 7,600 plus in our budget account?
In your revolving account.
Okay.
Money that...
Revolving account is not the budget account.
Well, money that was in fiscal year '20 in your operating account, that money is gone. The money in the operating budget does not roll over from year to year.
No, I know, but isn't, doesn't that take place...
I was addressing the other person's question.
You were addressing Stacy's question, yeah, okay.
Which funds are we talking about? The budget funds or the revolving?
I don't know why you mean your operating budget.
My operating budget.
Yeah, those monies don't roll over.
No, they don't roll over.
Okay. Thanks, Julie, that answers my question.
Okay.
Right.
So, okay, I'll ask later, I guess.
Well, Tom, I think I know what you were gonna ask, is, don't forget, we don't get those new funds until, what, July 1st, but we have programs that have to be funded if the programs can be held this year, you know, in 2021. We have the Easter Egg Hunt, we have the Fishing Derby, we have the Model Rocket Day, which we don't need anything for, and then we begin our, we begin our Music in the Park, and that all happens before the July 1st, where our new funding comes in. So we still have to fund those programs up until July 1st.
Those programs are funded.
Yeah, they're funded from our operating account.
Right, the current year that we're in right now is fiscal year '21.
Right.
So there is money available.
Yeah, there's money available.
Just to clarify, that money that wasn't used this year doesn't stay in their budget. It actually, if they don't use it, it's not there for the next...
Correct.
Is that what you're saying?
But when you say, "this year,"
Right.
Maybe, what are you talking about? The year that just started in July 1st of 2020
Right.
is fiscal year '21, and they have this money to spend. Yes, although $15,000 of it went to ORYA.
Okay.
But the balance of it is for the Recreation Commission to spend.
And Julie, can you tell Stacy in terms of the money that's in their revolving fund, how does money get into there?
That money gets there primarily through use of the fields.
So like rental fees if I wanna hold a birthday party?
Yeah, well, we don't charge for birthday parties.
Okay.
Rental fees for the fields.
Okay. So income, basically?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
All set.
All set.
Thanks, Larry.
Thank you, guys.
So are we going into...
Yep.
The programs now? Yeah?
So they've been patiently waiting as attendees, so you should have a list of names in front of you, Tom?
Yeah.
So if you wanna say...
Can I go in order of the list, or...
Sure.
Okay. So I have American Red Cross, Rachel.
Yeah, I don't think that she's on the call or on the meeting yet.
Okay.
But...
Next one?
Yeah.
Community Action Partners?
Yeah.
Let's see. Is she here?
Yeah, she is. I'm trying to get her, for some reason.
Oh, okay.
Now, how would I do that?
Oh, she's here.
Okay.
All right.
Go ahead, Betsy.
Betsy, and she's new... Betsy, and she's muted.
Hi.
There we go.
Am I working now?
Hi, Betsy. Betsy with Community Action Partnership. You're all set.
I'm right here. Can you hear me?
Yep, we got you now.
All right. I am so sorry. I just got a new headset and I do not know how to work that. So I'm incredibly embarrassed. So thank you so much for having me tonight on this radio night. I'm Betsy Andrews Crocker with Community Action Partnership. I want to say thank you for having us and entertaining our requests for assistance, which we had for two thousand dollars to the town. I know that in this age of COVID, it's really difficult for towns, particularly now looking at as I'm listening to the conversation of what we're gonna do. I just want to stress that even though the support that your community gives our organization seems very, very small, believe it or not, we are able to leverage the small amount of support into a lot of federal dollars as well as, and I'm sure you'll hear this from many people tonight, is that when we do requests to foundations and to other donations, it's often asked of us, how many municipalities support your agency? That's always been a question. And we're really happy to say that we have support from all of our communities and that that small two thousand dollars that we have requested and it's been the same. I've been here for 10 years. It's been the same request every year, really enabling for us to leverage over ninety six thousand dollars and funding has been immense. The things that your program does and your support does go to are things such as right now, we have a COVID housing relief fund that is we're administering for the state of New Hampshire. And to date, we've helped over 225 households in Stratford County with over six hundred thousand dollars in relief. And as many people don't understand, there is no overhead for things like that. There is no overhead if any of you are on the your local food pantry. We do all the food distribution for USCA and that has zero funds attached to it. So a lot of these things, your your support goes to support our bigger programs. And so I know you've heard this before and with that I will stop.
Any questions for Betsy?
Go ahead. Who Carrie, did you have a question?
No.
Oh, Betsy, can you tell us, how many people did you serve in Lee this past year?
Yep, and we served, let me see, we sort of told of ninety six households in Lee, actually, primarily with electric and fuel assistance.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for sending Sarah last time, last year.
Yes, she was not, we we are tag teaming because Zoom is very popular for town meetings tonight. So we are tagging herself around.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Everyone else up? No other questions? Thank you very much, Betsy.
Should I stay on the phone call or is it okay for me to step off?
You can leave if you want.
We're all set, yeah.
Okay, all right. I may listen to some of my other friends talk. Good luck, everyone. Thank you so much for your consideration.
See you.
Thanks.
Is Rachel back, Julie, or no?
I don't see her, although there's a telephone number that I don't know who that is. So why don't we just keep moving through the list and we'll maybe do it by process of elimination.
All right, Cornerstone V and A, Carrie?
I'm sorry. I can you can you hear me now?
Yeah.
There we go. Thank you. The question every time you're on a new platform for meetings, can you hear me now? So thank you, everybody, for having us back again. I just want to say thank you again for all, every town recently has had an impact because of COVID. And we continue to see the support from Lee and that is very much appreciated. We do continue to ask for the fifteen hundred dollars that we've asked for in years past. And I can tell you, in this past rolling 12 months, we've been able to service ninety one patients in the Lee area. And out of those ninety one patients, it's been just shy of sixteen hundred visits. Out of those ninety one patients, it's approximately sixty two thousand dollars in free care that we've provided to them. So the fifteen hundred dollars in the money that we get from the surrounding communities, this year especially, has enabled us to continue our continuity of care with those patients without skipping a beat. So when March came, we very easily were able to change our platforms so that we initiated telehealth in any of the hospice patients, all of the facilities that were shut down and no longer could even have nursing visits and or family. We instituted telehealth at the front desk and we're still able to communicate with all of the patients. We were able to put our intake staff and all of our nursing staff and managers remotely online as we operated in the cloud, very much like what we're doing this evening. So for us as an agency, some of these contributions go to making sure that pandemics or events like this don't impact our patient care. So that was one thing that we can say. While it was an awful year for a lot of people and a lot of companies, restaurants and such, we we were able to continue our patient care without a beat, without skipping a beat. So that was really important for the communities that we serve. Does anybody have, I I know that annually we send out, you know, the letter indicating what some of the issues were over the past year and what your funding goes to. Does anybody have questions about that or about some of the patients that we serve?
I'm all set.
No, I'm good.
Keep up your good work.
Everybody's up. Thank you very much for all you do.
Thank you, guys. You go one of the easiest towns we ever deal with.
We'll change that next year, Carrie.
No, 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 it works well. It's a good hour out of our time this evening, right?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Haven, Kathy, BB?
Hello, can you see me?
Yes.
Hello, welcome.
There you are, Kathy, we're all set, yeah.
Great, thanks for having me. This has been crazy time for everybody and really appreciate the opportunity to come talk to you a little bit about our request to the town of Lee for Haven. You've been incredible supporters of us over the years. We're asking for level funding. Things have looked really differently for us. As this was a difficult time for a lot of folks, it was a really difficult time for domestic violence victims because what we were hearing was that that increased isolation at home 24/7 without the respite of being able to go to work or have their abuser go to work was resulting in a lot of increased escalated violence. So we've had to really change the way that we do things. We started an online chat system where we were hearing from folks that couldn't even get to a phone because they were being kind of observed and watched. And so trying to provide support and texting back and forth to try to get some help. We've also increased our capacity around shelter. Our shelter has always been full, but we've seen more need for folks that are in imminent danger that need shelter. So we've had to do some alternative shelter in putting some folks up into hotels while still providing services and assistance, really doing whatever we can. We've seen our numbers go up. Last year, we worked with seventeen residents of the from the town of Lee, which included fifty one shelter nights. So there's a lot that's been happening. We never know how many people are gonna be in need in any given town. So that's why the support of the level funding is so important to us. So we are asking again for the thirty seven seventy five. As Betsy said, it it seems like a small amount of money, but it really does make a huge difference because it totally allows us to get the support from all the towns that we serve so that we can have a good substantial amount of chunk chunk of money to have the support and input from all of the different communities that we're trying to serve. Our education programs, we're normally in Mast Way, we're normally in Oyster River Middle School, the Early Learning Childhood Center, Maharamit, we're in all the different ones. We're trying to right now take all of our programs virtual, but being careful because our programs are designed to be in the classroom with the kids, providing feedback and information. And we can provide some virtual learning, but we also have to be careful about who's listening in on those if the kids are at home. So we're working with the schools around if there is any in person where the kids are going to school, how we can zoom into those classrooms. We've had our puppets go into some Zoom meetings to just give important messages of safety and to say hello to the kids and remind them of safety rules. And we're looking at an awareness campaign for the older kids because those are the harder ones to reach with our programming. But we're optimistic, all the schools are willing to work with us. They want us to continue to be able to provide that important information so that kids can get the help that they need, particularly as they're also isolated at home and maybe at risk. So I'm happy to answer any questions folks have. But again, we are asking for the level funding and appreciate your support.
I have a question.
Yes.
Kathy, do you do you also get involved in trying to find a Section Eight housing for people? We have a real problem in New Hampshire with the availability of Section Eight housing. And I'm trying to, I'd really like to know how, is anybody doing anything about increasing the Section Eight housing availability?
Absolutely, yes. We we actually started our Housing First program a couple of years ago, helping folks that aren't in imminent danger to get into housing while they access services while we provided assistance so that they could take that on as their permanent housing. We've had quite a bit of success with that in the couple of years that we've been doing it. I am very happy to announce that we just got a big federal grant through the Office of Violence Against Women and are partnering with the Community Action Partnership. Betsy, I know is still on the call, to increase our transitional housing. So that's a four-year grant to help folks that are domestic violence victims that aren't in imminent danger to get that assistance and that help. We've been working with the Dover Housing Authority. We've been working with the various housing authorities to try to make domestic violence victims a priority for getting some of the housing that's needed and are continuing to grow that program. Because what we know is that if we can get folks into their homes while they access the support to get back on their feet, that is proven to have like a ninety eight percent effectiveness of it becoming their safe permanent housing in the future. So we really want to do more to make sure people are safe and self-sufficient in their own homes.
Thank you.
Kathy, you you mentioned in terms of the increased need for your services. Do you have any numbers in terms of what that percentage increase has been? We've heard nationally that this is a particular issue and obviously, New Hampshire is not immune to this. But can you give us an idea in terms of the extra need that you've had to provide for these services?
Yeah, well, it's interesting because in our stats, we've seen more an increase in the violence itself more than in the actual numbers. But we have had police departments that have spoken to having a two hundred percent increase BB calls, that kind of thing. And we anticipate that, you know, as things kind of loosened up a little and people were able to get out a little bit more, we did see our numbers go up quite a bit. I mean, initially, it was kind of, we were working a lot with folks that had already accessed our services because they were able to, we have, we had already fortunately equipped our staff with work phones. So they had the ability to text with clients and that kind of thing. So we were hearing from clients we were already working with about their situations. But it was the folks that we hadn't worked with before that we were only hearing from if their situation reached a point where they had to they had to get out and get safe.
I understand, all right, thank you.
Sure.
Kathy, one question, do you also receive funding from the Oyster River School System for your participation in some of those programs onsite?
We do not require any, we don't charge any fees for our programs. Some of the schools do give us an honorarium or a donation. So we've often requested that, but it's been anywhere, just a small amount of money. And we wouldn't not go in if somebody didn't have, if a school didn't have that resource. We're obviously for any of the virtual stuff that we're doing, we've suspended even asking for the donation around that. We're just trying to get the information out there to the kids.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions?
All set.
All right, thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thanks.
Okay, so Tracy is gonna be joining us via telephone.
Okay, so homeless shelter for Stratford County, Tracy.
Looks like she's.
Hello, all, can you hear me?
We can.
I just about fifteen minutes ago finished a two-hour and fifteen-minute advisory budget committee meeting for the town of Barrington. So first of all, all of you volunteers, thank you so very much. And all of you volunteer elected officials, thank you very much. I know how much work goes into running a town. Homeless Center for Stratford County has been funded for multiple years through the town of Lee and we appreciate it. About half of the Stratford County municipalities provide some type of support for our shelter. We are not a state-funded shelter. This year, for the first time, we had a pilot program for our after-care program where the families that we've placed in permanent housing, we follow and continue programming with them. And this is the first year that the county actually provided some funding to our small nonprofit shelter as well. But we are located in the waste management dump currently and we serve between forty five and eighty five clients over a seven and a half month period each year that begins in October and ends sometime in May. We've been very lucky in getting clients placed in private apartments. And I think out of our twenty four families we've placed in twenty four months, only one of them actually made their way into public housing. I heard that question earlier about housing choice vouchers. They're very limited and they take quite a bit of time to get a voucher. So we tend to rely on private landlords for placement of our clients. The most recent client we had last season from the town of Lee was a family of three, two veterans that were residing in one of the professors' homes from the University of New Hampshire. And privately, the professor reached out to me to help this family with their housing needs, their budgeting needs and some help with repairs on a car to get them back on their feet. We do a lot of two-generational approach to sheltering clients. For that reason, we are a dry shelter. Everyone is drug tested upon entry because we tend to serve a disproportionate number of school-aged children at our shelter. So if there's twenty six clients, fourteen of them are usually kids and twelve are usually adults. We work on everything with our clients from how to write their resume to how to do their interview skills, how to present yourself to a landlord. We help them write family narratives so that management companies for the apartments have a nice locked-in approach of who the families are that they potentially are going to be renting an apartment to. We provide every bit of furniture and kitchen moving kits when people leave our shelter. And we do that so that people have the funds that they need over the course of a month in order to continue making their payments. We work collaboratively and very closely. I know you heard from Community Action Program earlier. They're an amazing program with a lot of depth to what they can offer. And they've been wonderful to work with for many of our sheltered clients that are moving into housing. I heard from Haven earlier and we've taken some referrals for clients from from their program when they've been full. So we're very lucky that our nonprofit programs in New Hampshire are robust. We run our shelter off about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty two thousand dollars. So the support that you provide to us matters and we thank you for it.
Okay, any questions? None for Tracy? All right.
I don't think so.
I will tell you very quickly, by next October, we will be in a new location in a new building with up to space for up to forty people. up to, space for up to 40 people. We'll be located at 202 Route 202, right down from Lowe's in Rochester. And we've just selected our builder and we'll be breaking ground soon on the new building.
So no more waste management, Tracy?
No more waste management. We're going to be close by buses and workplaces and grocery stores.
Wow.
Pretty exciting.
Well, you were at Waste Management because they were giving you facilities, right? That's why you were there?
They have helped, yep, they, they've provided it and we've done the upkeep all these years. So, but I, I do anticipate that the building we're in is actually just going to become more dumped.
Okay.
Yeah, so we, we have an agreement through the summer and then our new building should be ready to go.
Excellent.
Thank you all for your support, very appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Take care.
Bye.
All right, Julie, are we going to? We'll do ORA later or?
It's up to, it's up to you.
I guess we'll keep going.
You want to get through the others first?
Yeah, I was thinking that just because that might take a little bit longer.
Okay, so I'm going to bring Jamie in from Stratford Nutrition Meals on Wheels.
Great.
Did she? Did she?
Jamie.
Yep.
Did the microphone go off? We don't have video, but.
I don't know why, yeah, hold on a minute. Ah, there you go, I'm sorry.
There she is.
All right, welcome Jamie.
Hello everyone, I'm sorry. Like everybody else, I'm not used to the, some of these Zoom techniques yet. I appreciate you guys letting me come and speak for a few minutes and I won't hold you up too long. One, of course, is just, like everybody's saying, we're all so appreciative of what the towns do to help support our programs and I'm no different. It, it's, it really helps us in so many ways between making sure we can adequately serve your citizens, but also just keeping us funded with the increased expenses. Like right now, as you know, food's going through the roof. So as a Meals on Wheels program, that's one of my challenges right now, keeping up with that. We are seeing with the pandemic, and a substantial increase across the board. I haven't had time to figure out what it relates to each town, so I don't have specifics for Lee right now. I know last year we served 18 Lee people. I can't tell you yet how many, there might have been change. But across the board, I've had a 13.9% increase in seniors and low and disabled adults reaching out to us during this pandemic. So we're, you know, beating the bushes to try to keep ourselves strong so we can be there for all the people that need us. For last year's, again, stats, we served your people, your residents, over 2,400 meals. This year, one of the things we've been trying to do besides regular service is making sure that they all have at least 14 days of shelf-stable backup food in case they get quarantined or we can't, for whatever reason, you know, we have an outbreak, but we have to shut down briefly. We just want to make sure no one goes hungry. Got systems in place to check on them by phone if we have to. Other than that, I, like I said, I'm asking for level funding and I just want to let you know that we are very appreciative and I'd love to answer any questions you might have about my program and what we do.
Jamie, can you, you've, you've been to speak to us numerous times and you've told us the, the procedures you go through in terms of people drop off food and they, you know, touch base with the client, make sure everything's okay. How have you had to change your delivery procedure for those services? Do you do some, I assume you're doing something differently. Can you go over that for us?
Yeah, we've done a couple of things right now. First off, for, for a short time here, we reduced the number of days we served and we're serving multiple meals to lessen the, the opportunities for exposure. We also have mandated not only that our staff had to wear masks and we provide them all with sanitizer for every, you know, in between each home they visit. They do not go into the homes unless that person's literally not able to come to the door. And we do have some of those that are bedridden or whatever that we have to bring it in. But in most cases, we've also had to buy like, like grocery bags type things, you know, the plastic ones. So, because a lot of people are meeting us at the doors with walkers and we, we can't just hand them a, a food, a milk, you know, all that stuff. They can't handle that with their walker. So we have it in a bag so we can put the bag on the walker or whatever and they can go back into their home. So yeah, there's been a lot of adaptations. We are hoping in the future to go back to hot meals. We've been at frozen meals for a couple of different reasons because our caterer has had challenges and we're working on trying to resolve that with them. And then just to make it more easier when we were trying to do multiple meal deliveries in one day. It, it does create a little difficulty. To cut, kind of touch on the caterer a little more, it's been an interesting environment. About five years ago, there were four caterers that did this kind of meal programs. It, it, you're talking thousands of meals every day delivered to multiple locations. So it's not something like an event caterer would do. And there's been a monopoly taken over, so now there's one. So it's, a lot of us are struggling to work with this caterer to get them to, you know, do what they need to do right now. But they're having trouble with, they're getting enough staff and meeting all the codes. So that's part of the reason we're still stuck in the frozen at the moment. But I am having another meeting this Thursday and we're working on resolving that.
Okay, thank you for sharing that.
Yep.
Any other thoughts or questions?
Anyone else? We're all set?
We're all set, thank you.
All right, thanks Jamie.
Hope to see you next year. Bye.
Stay safe.
You too.
So now I'm going to bring on Jennifer Sprague from Women Aid.
Oh. Okay.
Hello.
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 Hi Jennifer.
Hi Jennifer. Nice to meet you all and thank you again for this opportunity. I have to say, I'm humbled and honored that you've considered Women Aid to apply for this grant. As you can see, we have not reached out to the town of Lee in a while. I'm a board member serving since 2018. So I'm not quite sure what happened previous to that. But with COVID striking us this year, we've had to really relook at how we raise our funds for the organization. We have historically relied on fundraising events in town, inviting people in for cocktails and a dance and such. And with COVID striking, that's obviously not going back. So we have done a couple of new things, which is a look to our towns that we service, which is Durham, Lee, Madbury, and Newmarket, and have asked the towns for grants. We were awarded a grant from Newmarket last year, pre-COVID. And we have applied to Durham for next year and then we're looking for the town of Lee for the following year. Just to quickly say what Women Aid does, I should have started with that, sorry. We are an organization that helps families and individuals in short-term financial crises. We cover anything from rent to utility bills to medical or dental, childcare, transportation. We sort of cover the whole board of needs. But we are considered the very last resource for this individual or family when they've, they've exhausted every other organization which they could secure funding from. So we do definitely see it as a short-term need, not a long-term. And what else, sorry. Oh, the other thing I wanted to point out is, is that we do have a maximum contribution of $500 for our clients, which does not go very far and long in these times. So the $2,000 that we're requesting would only really be able to serve as four to five families in the Lee community. And with costs increasing, that's again, not going to go very far. So we are trying to really look to find different ways of bringing finances for our organization to help offset for these families and individuals. Is there anything else I can say?
Any, any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, no Stacy, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess my question Jennifer, I haven't heard of your organization before, so please forgive me. But I'm curious, how would members of our community in Lee become aware of the services that you provide?
Great question. So just so you know, we've been around since 2006. This is, we're going on to our 15th anniversary next year. But the way that a client who is in need, they would go to a person that they're working with professionally, like a pastor or a social worker or a doctor, anyone who is familiar with their home and financial status. They would come to us requesting on behalf of their client, the need. This, we call them validators. This allows us to feel that there's a person between us and the client, so we don't interface with them. And it sort of allows us to gauge the response and the need to make sure it is valid. And then we pay directly to the resource that they need to be paid. So if it's the electric bill, if it's heating, we pay directly to their account. We do not pay to the client.
Okay, that's good to know, thanks.
So your name is out there with pastors and doctors and so forth. They all know that they're familiar.
In fact, that was a, a big initiative for us this year was to reintroduce ourselves to the validators. We had a Zoom call with Seacoast Mental Health that, that has a lot of validators that come to us on behalf of their clients. We also have been in touch with the Oyster River School District and the Newmarket School District to offer our assistance. Reverend Patty at the Newmarket Community Church is a close friend of ours. Larry Rickner, Rickner Wood. Yes, we've also, he, I worked with him when he was at Waysmeat on a request. So we are continuing to get the word out there that we are here and ready to help for anyone who needs us.
Jennifer, can you tell us in terms of how many people have you served in the town of Lee in the last, you know, few years? Do you have any numbers that you can tell us?
I do, so fiscal 2019, so we're January to December 19, so it's a little confusing for me. But we did six residents in the town of Lee, so about $3,000 we spent in Lee. And then for this year, we have funded two families so far. So we've spent $1,000 because again, our cap is 500. And what I would say is, as a board, we continue to really think about our funding limit of the 500. It seems quite small in today's world and it's something that we're looking to increase in time as we can try to get more donations and fundraising efforts out there to increase our budget so that we can help more individuals. Because, you know, $500 really scratches the surface in most of these cases.
Can you, and I'm not sure if you mentioned it earlier, but the nature of what those particular people in Lee got for, you know, was it electricity? Was it rent?
It's predominantly rent.
Mostly rent?
Yeah, we fund over 50% of our, our funding goes to rent. And then it's utilities and transportation costs. So.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Thanks for your time, nice to be here.
Thank you very much.
Okay, have a good day.
Very much Jennifer, stay safe.
You too.
Are we ready to?
Who do you have? Do you have Waypoint or no?
No.
Or Red Cross now or?
The only other person that's waiting is someone named Brian.
Oh.
And Matt Gloode.
Yep.
So.
Go ahead with.
Matt.
Yeah. I see the name. There he is.
Hey there.
Hey man.
Brian is our treasurer, Brian Veronno, who's actually a Lee resident as well.
I'll bring him in too, thanks.
Sure.
All right.
Or we, I guess the guys with the same hairstyle to do these meetings.
Is that a requirement to be on your board or you have to be bonded or?
It's a requirement to, to do all the heavy lifting.
Okay, fair enough.
There's a lot of us.
Yeah, so thanks for having us. Thanks for having us back again. Obviously, we have a longstanding relationship with Lee and all of the towns that we serve, Durham and Madbury as well. This year, we have adjusted the request to only reflect an amount that would cover the admin operating for our recreational programs of the expected number of Lee participants. So whatever is offered by the town of Lee will be a direct subsidy to Lee participants and will be reflected in the player fees that Lee residents would pay for each of the programs that they would like to participate in in the upcoming year. So that's a little bit of a change in the previous years that incorporated all programming through ORA, which we classify in two ways, one recreational and two travel. Recreational for us is an in-house program that doesn't play an official league for the majority of the time. They might have a competition here or there as part of the program, but it is primarily played in-house and just purely recreational in nature. A travel program is typically one that would practice locally, participate in other leagues or tournaments and compete against other programs, towns around the general Seacoast area, potentially further if needed. We provided quite a bit of information, so I'm not sure if the next best place to go is if you have any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
Um, Matt, I would be interested in, you're talking about how your programming has changed. The world, what are you, where are you able to offer things and not offer things?
Yeah, I could probably answer that in two categories. One, how the organization has changed a bit and then how programming has changed a bit. So quickly, the organization has changed a bit. Through the cancellation of our spring season, every program was canceled. 750 kids, all gone right there. Refunds, some were kept as credits for those that wanted them. So that was obviously a large negative impact to the organization. It's our single biggest season, our spring season. So we, we did everything we could to reduce expenses and the biggest part of that is reduce staff. So we've got our volunteer board as we always do and your paid staff is, is me now. So I'm trying to manage the same level of expectations for programming that we always have, which is right around 30 programs a year, right around 2,000 participants, around 200 volunteers. And to be able to make that happen, we're trying to receive a little bit more support from what we call advisory groups. There are dedicated volunteers that help support the facilitation of our larger programs, our team sports-based programs. And from a program perspective, there's been quite a few changes. And it's, some of them are largely sport-specific. We've got a lot of signage out at the facilities. I don't know if you've been over Little River Park recently, but we've got signage there about where parents can go, how many spectators might be able to be there. We're encouraging drop-off and pickup only for most of our programs, minus some of the younger ones and even the younger ones. We're hoping that parents can stay in the parking lot areas. Kids are kept much further apart, groups are smaller, there's more space between sessions and a lot of programming. Changed some rules about equipment. You know, very little community use equipment out there these days. There's sanitization that's been going on. We're providing coaches with hand sanitizer. Our soccer program got all of our coaches personalized masks for the program. So there's quite a few things that have changed for sure. And we're getting ready to address what we think would be the biggest impact, which would be any indoor programming. Right now, it's completely unknown if any indoor program will be able to, to happen this year because of restrictions on potential gym use. would be able to happen this year because of restrictions on potential gym use.
Matt, can you speak a little bit, your relationship with Madbury and Durham? I know you moved from your Durham office to Madbury. Can you speak a little bit about those two towns and what's happened with them?
Sure. I mean, the office move has been a fantastic change for us. We, in the last year, moved into, we actually physically moved in in February to the former Lee Library. So that is right across the street from Demerit Park. So I look out the windows and I see our two baseball fields that we utilize for obviously our baseball programs and then a multi-use field. That facility has space for dedicated ORYA meeting space. It's got storage space down in the basement, areas for two to three desks, small kitchen. It's great. Being able to have a meeting without a Zumba class going on or knitting group or movie time has been great. Being able to be right across the street from where a good portion of facilities take place is awesome. Having dedicated storage space that is not overrun by squirrels is great as well. So it's been a, it's been a good move. I feel as though we left very amicably with the town. We've, we're in the same budget process with the Town of Durham. That's been going well. So I still have a good relationship with Rachel and Durham Parks and Rec. We're still planning on returning to our 5K Trail Race fundraiser event in next October. We did postpone it for this year. We felt it would be too difficult to run a single-day event of that size safely. So the Town of Madbury is obviously a great relationship with them. And I can't think of any new developments on either side besides an office move.
Just to clarify, I think in the beginning you said you moved into the old Lee Library.
Sorry, Madbury Library, yeah.
Yeah, just so we're in the right town.
Of course, yeah.
We have enough space problems at our library. We don't need you moving into that building. So thank you for that.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions?
I'm all set.
Everybody's all set. All right. Thank you very much, Matt and Brian.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. So do we have anybody left, Julie, or?
Nope.
They're all gone?
All gone.
All right. American Red Cross didn't show and Waypoint?
Correct.
Okay. Is everybody all set?
Yep.
We have to approve those minutes, right, from the last time? So what do I do? Take a roll call or?
Well, you gotta make a motion.
Mm-hmm. Motion to approve minutes, what was it? 29th? September 29th?
Was it 29th or the 6th? I don't remember which one you're talking about.
It was, the one was the 29th that Denise had sent me and said that.
Okay. Oh, are you moving that?
So that's the motion.
Second.
Can I just do all in favor or do I have to roll call?
You have to roll call.
Roll call.
Scott Bugbee?
Yes.
Stacy Waits?
I wasn't present, so.
That's right. Cora? Yes. Pat Barber?
Yes.
Rebecca Hawthorne?
Yep.
John LaChorus?
Yes.
Mary Brown?
Yes.
Julie, do I need to?
She doesn't vote.
I don't need to approve it.
We'll include everybody. Okay. All in favor, it passes. The minutes are. And turn the meeting back over to John.
Oh, can I just ask one thing?
Yeah.
And I'm not sure, maybe you've had a conversation with Stacy already, but Stacy, do you have any questions? You kind of got thrown into this kind of like, without any prep. I don't know. Is there anything you want to ask in terms of process or anything that you've come up with and you have no idea what's going on?
I have some, I mean, I have a lot of questions and I peppered them in throughout. So I hope that you guys don't think I was, you know, asking too many. But yeah, I mean, if somebody could or would be willing to give me kind of a crash course on town budget, I don't know who that person would be, but maybe just the 30-minute Cliff Notes version offline would be very helpful for me. So I can understand the process and, you know, how the money gets allocated. And, you know, my one question on if it gets to roll over year over year, you know, just some general administrative information like that would be really helpful for me if somebody wouldn't mind spending 30 minutes or so.
I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. Excellent, Julie. So how about I email you offline and then maybe you and I can have a separate Zoom call so you can catch me up?
Yeah, that would be great.
And thank you very much, Stacy, for joining us.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm really excited, guys. This is my first foray into civic engagement. So I'm looking forward to the experience.
Oh, it's very exciting.
Could I ask one more question about ORYA now that Matt's off the call?
Sure.
His answer to my question, I gather, we really don't have any idea how much of a program he's going to be putting on going forward.
I don't think he really knows, does he?
Yeah.
You're absolutely right. He has no idea.
I don't think he does.
That's kind of what I thought.
We'll have to talk about it and see what we think is, especially this year, because we're trying not to spend a whole ton of money. I know this is for next year, but still, I think we'll have to talk about it and see what we want to be contributing like we did last year, you know, as far as where we're going to go with that.
Well, as you know, Pat, a lot of the cost that that $30,000 they're asking for is administrative.
Oh, I know.
So administration doesn't go away just because there's no programs. So.
Yeah.
But he's trying to pitch what he's doing for the Town of Lee Kids. And if he has no program, then.
Definitely.
That will offset the amount of the cost. Well, the amount of the cost of what? You know, so we don't even know whether they're gonna.
They have been, they have been doing programs this summer and fall.
I figured they had been.
Little River Park is busy all the time.
Yeah, okay.
They decided to do an outdoor basketball program.
Oh, wow.
Which I think has been really popular.
They also have soccer. My son participates in soccer.
Right. So they have, they have been doing, I mean, his concern, which we all have, is what's going to happen in the winter when everybody has to move inside.
The hockey programs and all that, you know, the, any indoor programs, basketball.
You're breaking up back, Rebecca.
And you're frozen.
I know. I can see that. My internet apparently is unstable against the wind.
You, we missed the question or was it a comment? Do you want to say it again or? They just sent me an email about hockey, she says in the chat. What? In the chat, she said, they just sent me an email about hockey.
Oh. Well, the other thing that we've talked about previously in terms of, I know Pat and I have had this conversation offline, in terms of what they attribute to administrative cost as well. I think that's something we need to look at because when they're saying the percentage of the administrative cost, some of the things that, alas, in my opinion, aren't really administrative costs, they're like add-ons and maybe they shouldn't be included. So we're going to have to look at that one real close.
How's their relationship with Durham?
That's why I asked the question.
Yeah, he didn't really answer that.
Yeah. I was expecting a little bit more, but I don't know.
Doesn't it say their request is $45,000 for 42? Not 30 something?
Thought it was 31.
31.
I'm looking at the sheet that's up on the board.
That's all of the recreation budget.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Oh, yeah, I see. Or, okay, never mind.
So our next meeting is on the 27th and it's Public Works. So you get the transfer station and highway department.
Okay.
When do we actually chat about, when do we chat about these decisions that we need to make at the very end?
We have meetings that we have scheduled at the end of this where it's just the ABC, the Budget Committee, where we all talk and we go over the numbers and we decide what we would like to recommend based on what everybody thinks. So we'll have.
The internal one is the 17th of November.
Yeah. So we try to split it up half and half because we'll discuss the ones we've seen up until that point. But nothing's ever done until we make a recommendation to the board in December.
And I guess just if you guys could just entertain me for just one moment. So one of the things that I heard a lot from some of these people was about housing. And so I'm curious, does Lee have a budget for housing-related assistance to our residents?
Yes, that's in the general assistance budget, AKA the welfare budget.
Okay.
It's like, what is it, $24,000, something like that?
I don't think it's that high.
Been the same for years.
I can take a look at the budget requests. You sent that over to me, Julie, so I can, I can look at that. I was just curious if we had something like that.
Okay.
There's also assistance available in the form of tax relief for different categories of folks.
Keep talking.
Any more questions?
Everybody all set?
Julie, do you have anything?
Nope.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Goodnight, everybody.